Okay, councilors, thanks for your patience. We're ready to get started. Welcome to our electronic committee of the whole meeting on October 6, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Regional Council is practicing physical distancing. The majority of our councilors are participating electronically, while Councillor Foxton, Chair Redman, and myself are present in the council chambers at 150 Frederick Street in Kitchener. In an attempt to speed things up, we've assigned a mover and a seconder for all recommendations contained within the agenda package. I'll read these out at the appropriate time, and then I'll state the result of the vote. We are now going to do the roll call. Soon as we can get the mics straightened out. Councillor Armstrong?
Here.
Councillor Clark?
Here.
Councillor Urb?
Here.
Councillor Foxton? Councillor Galloway?
Here.
Councillor Harris?
Here.
Councillor Jaworski?
Here.
Councillor Jawett?
Here.
Councillor Kiefer?
Here.
Councillor Lorenz?
Present.
Councillor McGarry?
Here.
Councillor Nowak?
Here.
Chair Redman?
Here.
Councillor Shontz? Councillor Shontz? Councillor Strickland?
Here.
Councillor Vravanovic? So Councillor Shontz and Councillor Vravanovic are missing. All right. I'm now going to ask for any declarations of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Okay, seeing none. We do have one delegation, Dr. Chang. He's delegating on item 6.1, the Declaration of Surplus Lands at 242 King Street South. And Dr. Chang, if you'd like to approach the podium. Dr. Chang has three minutes.
I'm here about the property at 242 King Street South. I own the property, next to it, at 240 for King Street South. Part of my settlement was parking, when they took my parking in the front of my property. And currently, I have two parking spaces at 242 King Street South, which would be lost if the building was sold. So I've got two issues here. Number one, I would like to have the opportunity to purchase that building. And number two, if that doesn't happen, I would like the region to repair the driveway, because about three, about four feet of the driveway is on my property. And in order for the cars to get through, they're on my property. So it's wrecked the pavement on my property. So if they do sell the property, I would like the region to repair the pavement on my property. Otherwise, I would put a fence up, in which case that driveway is no longer usable. It would be too narrow for a car. That, that's it.
All right. I'm going to ask if any councilors have questions of the delegation? All right. I see no questions of the delegation. I do have questions of staff, but thank you, Dr. Chang, you can sit down. Questions of staff?
Sorry, I didn't get that?
I have no questions for you, although some councilors have questions of staff. So if you'd like to take a seat?
Okay.
Thank you. Chair Redman?
Thank you, Chair Clark. I'm just wondering through you if Ms. Arnold could perhaps comment on the intervention by the delegation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Redman. So I would refer the committee to page three, Appendix A, of the staff report. And at the bottom, you'll see a paragraph which describes the registered easement that's on title relating to access to all three properties and also parking to serve all three properties. So this, this easement is registered on title. And so if and when the region sells 242 King Street South, it would be subject to this easement, which provides for, you know, benefits to the two adjacent properties, including Dr. Chang's property. And those, those rights would be, would be preserved. So any subsequent owner would take title subject to these obligations to allow for access and to allow for parking. And off the top of my head, and I, I can't recall, there would be provisions as well, though, related to appropriate cost sharing for maybe of the, of the driveway and the parking area. And so I would encourage Dr. Chang to, he can reach out to me or to real estate staff so that we can show him this, this registered easement document.
Dr. Chang, were you able to hear that? Were you able to hear Ms. Arnold? Ms. Arnold is our solicitor, and she encourages you to reach out to her because she can speak with you about the easement. Okay, we'll follow up. Councillor Foxton has a question? Comment?
Thank you. So Dr. Chang? I believe Bruce took care of it. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments on this issue? Seeing none, we'll now start a vote on the motion in Report PDL LEG 2050. Moved by Councillor Foxton and seconded by Councillor Galloway. All in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And for the information of those attending remotely, Mr. Lochner just took Dr. Chang out of the room to give him the information that he will need to follow up with, with Ms. Arnold. All right. We're now on to the consent agenda items. If you wish to remove an item from the consent agenda, please indicate so now, as we will not take questions on consent items unless items are requested to be removed to the regular agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda will be dealt with in one motion. Are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll now start a vote to approve-
Whoa, 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 whoa. What do you want? Want me to put a hand up or a checkmark or?
Yeah, I don't see any, any hand. Oh, you just appeared. Sorry, Jeff.
Okay. Sorry about that. Well, yeah, I think I'd like to hear from staff on the semi-annual performance measurements update. And I think we should have a discussion about the regional bunker as well.
Okay, so you would like to move items 5.5 and 5.2?
What do you mean by move them?
To move them out of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I think, yes, please.
All right. All right, can I have a vote to approve the remaining items? So 5.1, 5.3, and 5.4. I'm assuming that Councillor Armstrong and Councillor Urb will continue to move those. And all in favor, please use your buttons or raise your hands. And that's carried. All right. Councillor Lorenz, you'd like to speak to 5.2?
I'd like to hear from staff briefly on, on any highlights. So I think there's some, some really good information on there, and we should at least be discussing it a little bit.
All right. Who would like to, who would like to lead that?
I'd like to ask Chief Anna Belkenberg could say a few remarks about the report. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Dr. Wong, and through the chair. And I apologize, my office isn't set up, so I'm not always looking at the camera. But thank you for the opportunity through the chair to speak to this report. So you're correct, Councillor Lorenz, there are some really good points within the, the performance report for 2019. And so one of the, one of the good things is for our Response Time Performance Plan, which is actually our reportable to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, we met all our benchmarks for our Response Time Performance Plan, including the sudden cardiac arrest, which we had never actually attained compliance with. And that's because we now are incorporating the fire department data for defib on scene. So, and as you're aware, last committee meeting, we actually upped our Response Time Performance Plan for sudden cardiac arrest to 70% in six minutes or less, which is great. So what it's saying is we're getting to our sickest people than we've ever done before, and that's great. Our vehicle responses continue to rise at about 4.6% year over year. And our, our vehicle responses are still increasing as well. The good news story is we did have some delay, sorry, delay. We had some decrease in our offload delay in 2019, which is always good to see. Anytime that that downward trend continues, that's really good. One of the things that you will notice is that we're spending more time in code red when we get there, but we're having less code yellows as well for that. For our unit utilization, we did have a slight decrease last year, so about a 2.3% decrease from 44.2 to 43.2. So we're trying to get down to the master plan of 35% for that, and we'll continue to work on that. And part of that is the Black Belt Offload Delay Project, which is now underway with the hospitals in the area as well. And if there's any other questions or comments, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Thank you.
Councillor Lorenz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of them. Chief, just to go back to the 1.5% decrease from 2019, what do you think that contributes to? Is it less nuisance calls or people afraid to call to go in an ambulance or? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, so through the chair, so the, the 1.5% decrease, I think you're speaking to is the 2020 call volume, and that's mostly due to COVID. So there was a hesitancy, I think, on behalf of the general public to call 911 to go into the emergency department. But I would suggest that that 1.5% increase or decrease, sorry, will just be transitory. We are back at pre-COVID level call volumes. We did have a significant decrease in our call volumes over the March to June period when we were looking at the call volumes. So I expect that that 1.5 will unfortunately go back up over to a positive in 20, the rest of 2020 and 21.
And also the large reduction in offload delay. He said it's largely due to substantial lower walk-in patient volumes. Could you kind of elaborate on that? I don't understand that.
Sure, through the chair. So one of the things that we experienced through the COVID endemic is that most people were not walking into the hospital, so the emergency departments and the waiting rooms were not full of people waiting to see physicians. And our call volume also dropped. Therefore, our offload times dropped and our unit utilization dropped as well. And actually, if you look at the one chart, we actually dipped below the 35% during the COVID event.
Okay. Well, thanks, Chief, and I just want to congratulate you and your team. I think you've done a great job ever since this whole COVID stuff has started. I know there's a, I live close to West Mount Road, and I, I know that there's been some problems with ambulance being caught up in there, but, but I, I, I think you've done a fantastic job. I, I see so many ambulances in the area, and, and they just are being very efficient and certainly noticed by the public. So thank you for the great work, and please pass on my congratulations to your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Redman?
Thank you, Chair Clark, and through you to the chief. I, too, had a question about the offload delays, Chief. And I think that COVID-19 has presented some opportunities, and I, I know that the bullet under the offload delay talks about the Lean Six Sigma Offload Delay Project and how it was suspended. And, and Councillor Lorenz has already talked about some of the reasons for that. Is there an intent to reignite that after we're through the pandemic, when we suspect that the delay may become an issue again, and maybe even use the pandemic as a point in time to compare it to?
Through the chair, and, and thank you, Chair Redman. So, yeah, the actual, the, the Black Belt Project is actually now underway. They're collecting more data. They did collect some data during the pandemic as well, just to sort of get some work started. So the work has started, and interviews with staff, dispatch staff, hospital staff, administrative staff, that's all being planned right now. So the project is now underway in full.
Thank you. Good to hear, because I think that's been a longstanding tension point in the healthcare system. And again, thank you for, for you and all of the paramedics who've stepped up in a variety of positions through the pandemic, as well as the cooperation with fire and police. It's been outstanding.
Thank you.
Councillor Foxton?
Thank you, and through the chair. It is an excellent report and done well. I just have one concern in that I think the township stats get rolled into this, and then everything is averaged out. And as I've sent to all regional councilors in the last month, as, as well as I believe you, sir, sir, have seen it as well, the issue in regards to a man with his son and the 22-minute wait time, and I would say that's about normal for a township. I don't think realis, and, and I'll tell you what I'm getting at here is, when we say nine minutes, people in the townships expect you to bring it to, an ambulance to us in nine minutes. That's not physically realistic. You cannot drive to Wellesley, North Humphreys, Wilmot in nine minutes if the vehicle is not stationed in our townships. I'd almost like it to be two different types of stats. Ones that cover the cities, and I understand that demand is greater in the cities. I'm not questioning that at all. Your red zones are much deeper and stronger in your municipalities, your city municipalities. But I think I'd like to present the rural municipalities with real statistics that say, yeah, we can maybe get there at 15 minutes, 15 to 18 minutes. You're not going to make 10. Even breaking the speed limits, you're not going to make 10 minutes. So I'd just like it maybe to be a little bit more realistic, because when we see these numbers and they go public, people expect you to live up to them, and therefore you're setting yourselves up for failure, because you physically cannot do it. Thank you.
Councillor Galloway?
Well, thanks, Madam Chair. I would be remiss if I didn't ask the chief, whenever he reports, if there's any progress in terms of the province changing its policy on, on dispatch. We're happy, of course, that dispatch has been repatriated to Cambridge, but that, that really was expected, maybe sooner than, than later. But we're still, I think, as a municipality, looking forward to the day that we can replicate what Magr had and, and reduce our response times significantly. So is there anything, I, I'm not too hopeful that there is anything further to report, but I certainly don't want this to fall off the radar. I wouldn't imagine it is.
Right. So through the chair, so I would assure everyone that every chance I get to poke the Ministry of Health about the dispatch issue, I certainly do. I do sit on the Ontario Association of Paramedic Chiefs Ambulance Dispatch Implementation Team Committee. That's the team that's responsible for the new triage system, and PDS is going to be going into the dispatch center. There really has been no further discussion with regards to any kind of transfer or downloading of dispatch. We are very happy that our dispatch center has been repatriated back to Cambridge, and, and it's taken a long time for it to happen, but I'm glad that they're back. And we'll continue to push that fight with the ministry at that table. But currently, there is no other further discussions with regards to the transfer of dispatch, unfortunately.
Thanks, Chief. Madam Chair, maybe if I could direct a question to Chair Redman. It seems to me, but I, I could be wrong, that the last time we talked about this, and we do about every three months or so, we might have directed you to put that on an agenda with area MPPs. I'm not sure if that's correct or not. Do you, do you recollect that, or, or has that come up on any agenda with our area MPPs?
Councillor Galloway, yes, it has, and we meet with them from time to time, and it's sort of a perennial issue and one certainly that we could renew, and I would be very happy to do that. So I'll take that as advisement and put that on the next meeting with our area MPPs.
Thank you.
I just want to note that Councillor Vravanovic has joined us. And Councillor Lorenz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back to Councillor Foxton's question. Isn't our new headquarters in Wilmot? Chief? Or are we just right next to the Wilmot line?
Chief.
General, Mark.
You're, you're correct. Our, our new headquarters is just over the border in Wilmot.
Yeah. So the response time in Wilmot would probably be less than 22 minutes. Is that correct?
Through the chair. So we do have a deployment station in the new headquarters on Urb's Road. If the vehicle is here and not tied up on other calls, it could be, but it's also situational dependent and call-location dependent.
Thank you.
Councillor Harris?
Yes, quickly, thanks, Chief, again, and excellent report and excellent work, again, with your team and our regional paramedics over the last few months, if not years, in fact, for their outstanding service. Chief, I know you've been a, you know, a provincial voice at the table on behalf of the region for regional dispatch, something that, again, I'm glad Tom or Councillor Galloway raised and others, especially Chair Redman, with our local MPPs. It's critical. You know, you see reform happening with public health and other areas, and this is definitely one that, you know, we need to continue to hammer home, as it will save lives and likely reduce costs at the end of the day. So perhaps even it can be included as we, you know, on the annual submission for our budget requests, knowing that it should be front and center as a request from the region. So again, thank you, congratulations, Chief, on, on all of your members' hard work here in the region, and thank you for your leadership on this particular matter.
Thank you, Councillor.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Councillor Lorenz, for, for raising this up. I think that a 30% drop, or more or less, in code yellows and code red, code reds is something that we do want to acknowledge and celebrate. So thank you to the chief and, and all of the team. All right. Councillor Lorenz had also asked that item COR FFM 29, the regional bunker, be brought forward for discussion? Or do you have questions about that, or would you like a presentation? Councillor Lorenz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I find it interesting that it's going to the Heritage Planning Committee, but I think it's kind of a, it's a big decision that we should probably be looking at. In my mind, it's either we keep it and restore it at $1 million, or we demolish it and use the land for some other, some other purpose. It could be a parkette for the city, it could go back to the GRCA. I don't think you can really build anything because it's beside the river. But I don't see any historical significance in an old bunker that was built back in the 60s. I mean, you know, to me, it seems like it's, it's past its prime. It hasn't been well-maintained over the years, and it could become more of a hazard. I, I don't think we should be spending $1 million to rehab it. And I, I think that, that's something that, we could hear what the committee has to say, but I think it's a discussion that might interest the, the community as well.
Councillor Harris?
Yes, I would concur with Councillor Lorenz. You know what, I, I was shocked to read the fact that we actually had a bunker here in the region, and it only has capacity for 40, 40 people, which clearly is not enough these days. But nonetheless, joking aside, I think the cost, obviously, to rehabilitate this, you know, would far outweigh, you know, any other value to taxpayers, frankly. I'd like to hear from the GRCA, frankly, and, and what its use may be, in fact, with regards to this particular property. Obviously, we can't build anything on it because it is on a floodplain, but you know what, I think it's a pretty easy decision, hopefully, to just, you know what, not do the renovation and, and, and move on with doing, doing something to get rid of the property, I guess, or doing something other than rehabilitating it at $1 million. It just seems outrageous for something that we probably don't need anymore.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we never, ever have to need.
Maybe we should just enlarge it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm sure that would be probably one of the options, unfortunately, but my vote wouldn't be going there at all.
Councillor Kiefer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Councillor Lorenz as well and Councillor Harris, but my question is, is that, I believe, and, and staff may be able to confirm this, this was something that was built by the city of Kitchener prior to the region of Waterloo. Is that accurate?
Is that a question first? Go ahead.
If I may, Madam Chair, on the call today, we have Charles Allen, our Assistant Director of Facilities, and Charles may be in a position to answer that question.
Sure. Through you, Chair. My understanding is that it was built by Waterloo, Waterloo County. So what I've got in my notes here, municipalities, from the Waterloo County Civil Defense Group, later named the Waterloo County Emergency Measures, Measures Organization, and that's the group that organized together to build the bunker.
So you're saying that the city of Cambridge participated in, in this as well? Is that what you're saying?
I really don't have that much history. I'm not sure who all was part of that group. Yeah, we, we have limited information about the building.
Yeah, I guess my point is, thanks for that. I guess my point is, is that if it's the city of Kitchener issue, why are we at the region of Waterloo dealing with it? You know, and, and in particular, if it's going to be parkland, and parks are under the jurisdiction of cities, not the, the region as well. So I'm, I'm not in favor of, you know, the region getting involved with anything here, so, but that's just my point of view. Thanks.
Mr. Dyer, did you want?
So, so three, Madam Chair, I would just, I would just reinforce a couple of things at this point. One, the report is for information. There's no decision that we're seeking from council at this point. The, the intent of the report was to raise awareness of the property and the process, and I think we've been successful in doing that. Once the, the process with the heritage impact assessment is complete, staff would report back to council with options and a recommendation on how to proceed. And to Councillor Kiefer's question- and a recommendation on how to proceed. And to Counselor Kiefer's question, with respect to why the region is involved, notwithstanding that the property is within the City of Kitchener, if I understand it properly, it's a regionally-owned building and piece of land. And that's why it's before council for information.
Counselor Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks to Mr. Dyer for that. I realize there's no decision to be made here today. But I do have a contrary position to what some of my other colleagues have said. Nuclear proliferation continues to be a real problem for world and stability in the world. And you don't need to look much farther than even a year ago and the tests that North Korea were performing. And so I'd like staff to consider an option of programming the space, not necessarily a bunker for certain politicians. But I think there's a real educational opportunity here around nuclear proliferation and sharing with young people, you know, how close the world was to nuclear disaster, and how we must remain vigilant to make sure that we put whatever means in place to ensure, you know, world order where that potential is minimized. So I think that, you know, let's let the process take hold, and then maybe look at some creative opportunities to use that space if council is willing. But I certainly am not prepared to make a decision today. But I would like staff to think a little bit more broadly in how this might be used. It could be a programming space for the region museum. I think there's an opportunity here to educate young people into the future about the importance of being vigilant around nuclear arms. Thank you.
Counselor Galloway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Counselor Strickland. I think we need to look at all the possibilities. And whether it's programming or rehabilitating the space so that it can be used as a bunker. But programming it, or even using it on a regular basis for other purposes of the region might have, which then, of course, would be vacated if and whenever there might be a need to use it as a bunker. I've been in the bunker a few times. And yes, it needs a lot of work and doesn't lend itself to a lot of different types of uses. But while $1 million sounds like a lot of money, and indeed it is, if we were to have to replicate the space, not necessarily as a bunker, but for other regional purposes, that would be, that would be necessary, $1 million might not be a bad price tag to be able to have the bunker, but also use it for, on a regular, daily basis, for some other, for some other purpose. I don't know what that is, but I certainly would like staff to consider that. And I'd like to see the report with all the different options in it, as opposed to making it, you know, making a decision here today. Thanks.
Chair Redmond?
Thank you, Chair Clark.
Can you give it to me?
I would just like to make a couple of observations. Mr. Dyer has already talked about the fact this came to us for information. You can tell from the number of people who are joining in the conversation that it will be of great interest. I would tell you, Counselor Harris, that I knew well about this because one of our daughters was part of the KW Community Rowing Club, and that's where they stored their boats for many years. I think it's really appropriate that the experts on staff in our museum departments, as well as the heritage of both Kitchener and Waterloo region, give us input on this. I would also point out, I don't know how many of you have been to the Deafen Bunker in Ottawa, but there is a place in the line of history for this kind of thing to be commemorated. And I guess it really depends, at the end of the day, whether regional council likes any one of the options that are brought forward. But it really, I think, needs expert eyes looking at this and evidence and hard facts so that we can make the decision. So, Mr. Dyer, I really appreciate this being brought forward. I viewed it as information. We don't have to rush to make a decision at this point in time. So I look forward to having additional information where we can make a decision that will impact future generations as we go forward of a moment in time, I think.
Thank you. Counselor Lorenz?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess that's one of the reasons why I asked for this to be taken separately, is because I don't think we need to make a decision today. But I think we need to have an important community discussion on this, especially for people that are as old as me or older, that remember this bunker of being there for... So I don't know what the solution is. And I didn't expect us to be debating it, but I think it's good that we had this discussion. And I think the community should be involved in this discussion. So the rehabbing it, in my view, if you look on the site, there's very much parking there. Unless you start taking up parkland and woodlots and whatever to create that. So I think that we should let it run its course. But I'm really happy that we had this discussion. Because I think, I think the community would really be interested in following this project, and maybe giving us all some advice on what they think we should be doing, whether we should be having it, or destroying it, or, you know, just restoring it. So I'm not sure. But it was a good discussion, so I'm glad we had it. Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, well, thanks for that.
Yes. Counselor Vervanovic? Oh, Barry, you're on mute?
Thank you very much, Chair Clark. And I would, I would add to the comments that I don't think we need to make a decision today. I think this is an important community discussion to be had as well, because it is a piece of our community's history. In fact, you know, a number of us will remember that part of this region's emergency preparedness in the past included the bunker, but also included a number of air raid sirens that used to exist around the city. We had one, the one closest to my house was on the DND site at the auditorium. And sure enough, about every, you know, year and a half or so, it would accidentally go off every couple of years. For, I don't know if it was accidental or if it was a kid's prank, we figured out how to make it work. But it used to. Now, those are all gone. To the best of my knowledge, certainly the one there is. But I think there is value to talk about, you know, that portion of our, of our, of our history. I mean, I learned something new in this report today. I didn't, you know, I wasn't aware, quite frankly, that our staff at the city here had been having some discussions with the region about it potentially being part of, we're looking at a Grand River Park network as a city. And, you know, even, I mean, quite frankly, it could potentially become some kind of shared-use facility between the region, GRCA, and the city. If that area does get further developed as a park that would benefit everyone, and potentially become a tourist attraction that would, that would also create jobs. So, yeah, let's not rush into it. And let's have some of those discussions and see where they go.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment about the Heritage Planning Advisory Committee. I sit on that committee. It certainly doesn't limit itself to making recommendations for or against demolition. It also makes recommendations around how to commemorate a piece of property that is being lost, for whatever reason. And that could be saving some portion of it. It could be doing something educational with it, or something commemorative. So I think it's very appropriate to involve that committee in the consultations and planning going forward. Okay, I see no other questions or comments on that item. We're now on to the regular agenda item. I'm going to read the report number and ask if there are questions before its information. Yes, we voted on everything else. That was simply an information. I'll ask if there are any questions before calling the vote on the reports with the recommendations. We already dealt with item 6-1. We are now on to item 7-1, Temporary Bike Lanes Update. And I believe there is a presentation plan for this?
Through you, Madam Chair. There actually is not a presentation plan. So this, this report is for information. And it is, I'll note, it is preliminary information. It is up to the end of August. We continue to collect, collect data. But it does give some indication of where we are. Staff will, when the study is complete, the pilots are done, we will gather all of that information and come back with a subsequent report that summarizes that and provides some recommendations on moving forward. So either myself or Mr. Vanderkere are here to answer any questions.
All right. And you have a couple, starting with Counselor Lorenz.
Oh, boy, where do you start on this one? So there was a report that went to ATAC a couple of weeks ago. And I spoke to Mr. Vanderkere, because I was on that committee and asked him a number of questions. And one of the questions I asked him for West Mount Road was, where was the, where was the information coming from, which intersections? And he said to me that they were monitoring Westwood and Glasgow. So the information that we received didn't include anything happening at Greenbrook Drive, or Queens Boulevard, Highland Road, and Victoria. And in my view, if you want to provide information, especially on activity like this, those are the key intersections that should be monitored. So I really take all of this stuff with a grain of salt. I mean, you know, he also reported at that meeting that cycling had increased by 2,008% on Coronation Boulevard when the barrels were up there. And I see Counselor Kiefer shaking his head because he was part of that committee as well. And I don't know, it sure sounds like a lot. But when you start giving stats and percentages, it's really, really misleading. So I have some concerns about all of this. I live West Mount Road every day, and I get complaints from business owners. I get complaints from people in my neighborhood. I get people that are walking down the street, emails all the time. And honestly, I think it's been a big mistake. And it's something that people will remember for an awful long time. So I'm interested to see if anybody else has any other comments. But quite frankly, West Mount Road was a huge mistake, and it still is.
There are a couple of other comments. Counselor Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along a similar vein, I got a couple of questions and then a comment. In terms of the statistical reporting, it would be great when the final report comes back, if we could have nominal numbers. So rather than percentages. So if, for example, you had 10 cyclists using a street, and then it came, and then you analyzed it, and it was 14, well, you've had an increase of 40%, which sounds great. But you've only gone from 10 to 14. So it'd be good to know what the actual number of cyclists were on this report. I think that's important. I also am wondering when the cones are going to come down. No, the other thing is, on the number of cyclists, and also, I think this is, is any way we can determine different cyclists. Because even if you went, using my example, from 10 to 14, are they trips? Are they same cyclists? Or those 14 trips could be done by, you know, seven cyclists. So I think it's important, if we're really going to take a look at this, and use this for future planning, to really have a little bit of a deeper dive into those numbers. So I'd be interested to hear staff's comments on that, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll get Steve, Mr. Vanderkere, if you could respond on those, please. And on the timing of the barrels as well, please.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. The report is a very brief summary of traffic and cyclist usage observations made by staff in July and August. If councillors would like to dive deeper and see actual nominal numbers, they are included in the attached operational memo, which is an appendix to that report. It was also sent out to councillors, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. And it has actual cyclist numbers in it, pre-COVID, and the counts that were done in July and August. So we will continue to take those counts. We just did another set of counts of traffic and cyclists about two weeks ago. We wanted to make sure we captured the return-to-school volumes. And just as a side note, we noted that traffic volumes are still down about 27% total daily volumes when compared to pre-COVID volumes on those roads where the temporary bike lanes were installed, even in the third week of September. We will do another set of counts in October, which will also capture cyclist usage and traffic volumes. As far as the locations where the counts are done, staff worked within a budget to try and deliver the counts within a reasonable cost, and selected locations where we could obtain historical pre-COVID traffic volumes and cyclist volumes to use as comparators. We did add a couple more locations on West Mount Road after concerns were raised at the ATAC meeting. So we will have some additional count information on West Mount Road. In addition, the travel and speed delay studies that were done and are summarized in the report and the operational memo cover the entire length of the road. So when staff drove back and forth along each road to record how long it took to drive, and delay issues and speeds, they drove the entire length of the road, which would capture all locations along the road in terms of how the reduced capacity has affected question and delays for motorists. Staff are putting together a plan to remove the barrels, as recommended and approved in the June report. They will need to come down before the snow falls, either that or October 31st, whichever comes first. But staff do have a plan to start removing the barrels the week of October 19th. Because there are 6,000, actually, not 6,000, less than 6,000, but still a lot of barrels. And it'll take several days for the contractor to remove them. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thanks for that, Steve. When I reviewed the agenda last evening, I must have missed that operational report, because I haven't seen those nominal numbers. So if that's there, I'll find it. Or if you could send it out, I'd love to have a look at that. Okay? And then on removal of the barrels, so what you're saying, through you, Madam Chair, to staff, is that they'll be gone by October 31st, the latest?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think that the community will appreciate that. I know there are some cyclists who have really enjoyed the temporary cycling lanes as well. Here's my observation, that obviously, when staff went into this and proposed this recommendation, I wasn't in favor of it. But council decided that they wanted to do it. And so, you know, we had to move along with that. I think when you look at that analysis, the thing that really strikes me is that, yes, there's a lot of emails, a lot of people who supported the installation of the barrels. But that was an organized campaign from cycling lobby groups. And so when you compare that to the unsolicited amount of emails we got in opposition to the temporary bike lanes. And the report or the memo there captures, I would say, just a fraction of it. Because I certainly didn't forward all the emails that I received from constituents through the staff. So there was an overwhelming opposition from most of the public to these temporary bike lanes. And I think that that's quite clear. And that's something that myself and other members of council are certainly concerned about, when we did not support the temporary bike lanes. But having said that, the observation that I'd also like to make is that the vast majority of those emails that I received from people in opposition to the temporary bike lanes said that they would support permanent cycling infrastructure. So even though I was against the bike lanes, I don't think the experiment was a success in terms of getting more cyclists to use it. I would say that it was a success in terms of raising the issue of permanent cycling infrastructure within the consciousness of our constituents. So I think it does pave a path forward for us to put into place our permanent cycling infrastructure that we have and are plans going forward. So I think if there's any pause that comes out of this, even those that were against it, in terms of the temporary, we're in favor of more permanent cycling infrastructure. So thank you very much.
Got a number of more speakers more. I'd just like to remind everybody that with the, our new terms, we are limiting our speaking to twice on any given topic. we are limiting our speaking to twice on any given topic. Counselor Kiefer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to agree with my councillors, Lorenz and Strickland, and there's a lot that they've said that, of course, that I agree with. With regards to the Coronation Boulevard section, I think that there was a mistake made in looking at that as an example. I think that the monies could have been used for more other things of a priority than that. Having said that, I do agree with Counselor Strickland that the fact is that there should be other roads that are looked at. Now, look, in my estimation, not all roads are meant to be, you know, used for cycles. I know the cyclists would love to say that, but there are roads that aren't meant for cyclists. I wouldn't put my own kids on some of these, including the way that Coronation Boulevard is structured. I travel it every second day pretty well. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that, you know, there's a question in the report that I read that the financial implications that were nil. Well, I'm sorry, but I think there are financial implications. There was a cost to putting up that, this experiment, and it just didn't, it just didn't work out. So I'm very pleased and thankful that council made the decision to get rid of the barrels on Coronation Boulevard, and the traffic can resume there the way it should. So I look forward to the further reports that staff are going to bring in terms of other roads that should be considered or could be considered. And for what it's worth, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Counselor Foxton.
Thank you, through the chair. I've gone, I've gone through the agenda several times, and I don't see anything that gives me actual numbers for the number of bike riders. I'm on page 32, 33. It talks about emails. It talks a lot about emails. But I don't see any numbers, so I don't know if that was missing from the report.
This was the document that was sent out in a memo form via an email? Am I right?
Through you, Madam Chair. It was sent out in a memo to councillors, but it was attached. We're trying to figure out why there are some issues with it. In some formats, people seem to be able to find that appendix. In other formats, they seem to be unable to find that appendix. So I've seen both. We will, we will follow up on that. And Mr. Vanderkirk, if you could send that memo out again by email to all councillors, just like right now or in the next few minutes. But we'll follow up on that. There seemed to be some issues with getting it attached. So I've seen it. I've looked at some formats, and I found it. And I've looked in other formats, and I've been unable to find it.
Yeah, because it's not in mine for sure. Thank you.
For what it's worth, it wasn't in mine either. Chair Redmond.
Thank you. Just so you know, I'm waiting for my mic to come on. That's the big pause. I really appreciate staff sending this forward, and this may be in the elusive memo that some of us didn't get, but I was really interested in the input, and I understand that when we look at the charts and the yeses and the noes, that people took the time to send in interventions. I received lots of thoughtful comments from people suggesting where on Coronation Boulevard we might install a multi-use trail and have wider sidewalks where there would be a line down the middle for one for pedestrians, one for cyclists. So I would have to tell you that I do think there was a very productive engagement of people that took their time to give thoughtful interventions. And I guess I'm wondering through you to either Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Vanderkirk, has there been any attempt to capture those kinds of input that were thoughtful and offered opinions other than they were for or against the temporary cycling lanes at this point in time?
Well, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, staff received a lot of emails and a lot of very good input, positive and negative towards the temporary bike lanes with lots of suggestions. And I would say that almost all of the locations where the temporary bike lanes were located are locations which are coming up in the region's capital program, either for reconstruction or for widening or for resurfacing. So when those projects come up, those project teams will be, have access to this information to use in making a determination of what options to look at for those reconstructions, which may, those options may include adding some cycling infrastructure where currently none does not exist. So it'll be good information for those teams moving forward.
So thank you. So I would agree that there has been a cost to this. I think that was Counselor Kiefer's point, but I would tell you it's also an investment in public input as we go forward, and I think that it's very valuable. And would like to thank all citizens that decided they would weigh in on this topic, because I think it's been very helpful.
Counselor Jaworski.
Thank you, through the chair. You know, certainly, I think when we first started this, there was a pandemic emerging, and staff were incredibly creative in saying, we can create space for people at a moment's notice. And I think that's very important. And I think if anything we've learned, if you ever want to do community engagement, you put out 6,000 construction barrels, and people will take notice. So that's one good thing there. But, you know, we looked at it from a standpoint, you know, can we do a network of cycling lanes and connect some of the things that are gaps? And we did that. And I think this all comes back to a function of our reconstruction plans and to what Counselor Strickland mentioned is permanent infrastructure. And this is something that is what our team excels at, is permanent engineering. And, you know, in the high-tech industry, you say, you don't know how far you can go until you push, until you almost, or you push until you fail. And I would say, you know, we pushed this as far as we could go. We learned a lot of good lessons. And, you know, we can't deny that there was certainly traffic calming, certainly not something we want to the point of extreme congestion. I'm really pleased that staff were able to touch on some of the early congestion that happened in the early weeks of this this project, this pandemic project. And, you know, I think all of us on council can say all learned a lot through this project, and we should be thankful for staff for bringing it to us. Certainly a lot of learnings to be had here. Thank you.
Counselor Verbanovic.
Thanks, Chair Clark. Many of the comments that I wanted to make have already been made, but beginning with the fact that, as Counselor Jaworski just indicated, this was a response to the pandemic. We were responding both to what we were hearing from citizens in our community who were trying to get out and stay active, and were looking for additional resources that could quickly be implemented in order to accommodate that. And looking at how this type of innovation was in fact evolving in communities across Canada and around the world. I think wisely, our staff looked at it, as has been noted, in the manner that would actually provide us with meaningful information to guide our work in the future around separated bike infrastructure. And we heard that, in fact, that is a highly desirable methodology and approach that people would like to see us take in the future. So I would actually like to thank our staff for, despite, you know, all the varying viewpoints on this issue, for working quickly and working diligently to get it implemented and get as much information out of this as we can, as we go forward. I think for me, the big win, and Chair Redmond touched on this, has been the level of citizen engagement. And for me, there aren't, there aren't two two levels or two types of citizens who provide input and engagement, those who are organized and those who are not. In fact, they're all citizens, and they all have valued opinions for us to consider and weigh as part of our decision-making process going forward. And in my view, we learned a lot, and as Chair Redmond has pointed out, a lot of thoughtful comments that have been pointed out. I've certainly heard from people on both sides of the argument. And there has been a lot of positive feedback, both in terms of using it as a temporary facility during these early stages of COVID, before we go back into winter now. But also in terms of the role that it's played in slowing traffic down on some of our speedways. And hopefully, it's also helped inform us around some of our thinking around regional roads. While we don't necessarily want congestion, they also shouldn't become speedways. And I think we need to bring more of a people focus to our regional roads, recognizing that people are using them. Pedestrians are using them, cyclists are using them, vehicles are using them. And we need to find a healthy balance for all these groups in the future as we redo this infrastructure or build new infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two more speakers, Counselor Lorenz, and then Counselor Galloway can have the last word.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the comments being said. I'm not thankful that staff put West Mount Road on there. I wish it would have been Weaver Street on the east side, and then I think we might have had different results. I think a lot of people on the west side of Kitchener are very upset about this road being placed there. And the reason the traffic is down is because everybody tries to avoid it like the plague. I've followed more than once transport trucks going up Lakeside Drive because they get lost, because the city has closed off Sterling Avenue in Greenbrook, and it's been closed off ever since the barrels have been installed. So a lot of people think they can get through over to Homer Watson, and they can't. So then they're kind of stuck. So a lot of traffic is bleeding off into residential neighborhoods, which I'm sure is not what we thought we wanted to do. But I'm a strong supporter of cycling. I've talked to a number of cycle groups. I'm working with one right now on a big project. And people that are dedicated cyclists think we've gone about this the wrong way. We need to move people to work with us. We need to bring them along. We just can't drop stuff in front of people's houses without telling them and think that everything's going to be just fine. I think there's a great example when you look at what we're doing on the widening of Highland Road right now. If you come from Iron Needles down Highland Road on the left-hand side, there's already a multi-use trail installed from Iron Needles all the way down to West Heights Drive. And there's still two lanes of traffic open, the road's being built. And in my view, that is a shining example of how we can work with the public. We can still provide amenities like a multi-use while we're building a road. And I think that's the standard we should be looking at as we move forward on a lot of these. Some roads, like West Mount Road, which is front-lauded, you just can't, they need to be what they are. You can't slow traffic down. What you do is you create two lanes, and everybody just, when there's a space, they speed even faster. So my view, West Mount was a poor choice. I still believe it's a poor choice. I still get comments every day, emails every day. I forward the ones that residents send to me that I ask if they would like all of council to see. But I certainly haven't forwarded all the ones that I've received. And I would ask that if we're taking the barrels down beginning the 19th, that we start with West Mount Road first. I think that's at least something that this council can agree on, and if they are coming down, let's do it there. I'm disappointed that we admitted we made a mistake on Coronation, and I'm disappointed that we haven't admitted that we did make a mistake on West Mount Road. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I wonder whether staff have a comment on starting with West Mount Road?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think we can take that as direction. It likely would have been the road that we would start on anyways, so we'll take that as direction.
Thank you. Counselor Galloway. Oh, you're on mute, Tom.
Sorry about that. I agree and disagree with a lot that has been said here. In general, I think that the project has been very successful. And yes, there's been a lot of pushback, but quite frankly, not as much pushback as I anticipated, given that we are still a very car-centric community, and people don't like being interfered with in terms of their driving. But the travel and speed delays that we see in this report are certainly well within acceptable ranges. There may be some exceptions at particular times of day, particularly on Big Court Road. But West Mount actually has gone fairly well in terms of the traffic and speed delays. But not surprised that people would object to that. But I particularly like what Counselor Strickland has said in terms of the his, you know, having been opposed, as he was, which is fair, but also stating that we have certainly created a lot of interest. We have created a focus on cycling and and will remind you that in our strategic plan under climate action, active transportation is one of our key objectives. So if we have accomplished having that kind of community discussion and community awareness, I think that it has been particularly successful, notwithstanding that there are people who object to it. But Chair Redmond is correct, that even some of those, many of those who did not like what we did have indicated support for permanent infrastructure, which is certainly one of the key objectives of the project. I mean, the genesis of the project, of course, was COVID, and we were able to quickly install some COVID recovery lanes, and a lot of people didn't understand that. They may not have been used to the extent that we saw for that particular purpose. But one of our key objectives was to move the needle, so to speak, to look at the statistics that this particular cross-section created in terms of speed and traffic delays and for future design considerations. And we are in the throes of a design process on West Mount Road from Classical to Herb Street, which we deferred. And this particular project is going to be very valuable in instructing that particular process. One of the key learnings in the project to this point, and we'll have another opportunity, I would imagine a few months from now, once the final report has been tabled, one of the key findings is that there is definitely a need and an interest for some cycling infrastructure in and around Coronation Boulevard in Cambridge to get people from Preston to Galt. Even though that it was a short project, it's where we saw the actual greatest rise in cycling. And again, many of the people who vociferously objected to those lanes in Cambridge, and that was a very well-organized and orchestrated campaign as well, acknowledged that the need is there. And so I think we've learned that, and I think particularly if and when we are able to install some permanent infrastructure there, there will be a lot more support for it, given what we did on this occasion, and given the support there appears to be for permanent infrastructure, even from those who greatly objected to the to the barrels. So I think in large part, it's been quite successful, notwithstanding the reaction. But I think when you look at all of the reaction, the commentary before we did it, the commentary during and now, you know, it's a bit of a wash when you do the numbers. But that's not the important piece. The important piece, I think, is that we probably have moved the needle in our community's understanding about the need and value of active transportation. And in this particular case, cycling lanes. So I think we've, we have accomplished that, notwithstanding that there are certainly people who don't support what we did. But I think sometimes when you have to lead, sometimes you're on what they call the bleeding edge. And so there may have been some bleeding, but I think on balance, this has been a successful project.
Thank you. I spoke a bit too soon. Counselor Urb.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think most of the information has been shared. I think for me, what I hope we could I think for me, what I hope we can do as council and as staff is use all of these lanes as a way of informing us of moving ahead with active transportation. And I think for those of us that supported it, we probably would have liked to have seen more cyclists using it. I don't personally think that pylon, just the appearance of pylons helped the project. It would have been nice if we had time to put up the little bollards that are used on some of the permanent ones, but that wasn't possible. I spent some time knocking on some doors of people who live on West Mount, phoned the people that I know who lived there, and there was a significant appreciation from them for the slowdown in the traffic. So while it may not have all been focused on the number of bicyclists on the lanes, traffic was also a consideration, and it did slow down considerably on West Mount. So all in all, I hope it's something that provides us some information as we look at the reconstruction of West Mount in the next year or two and also to inform us on how we can do active transportation throughout the region.
Thank you. Counselor McGarry.
Thank you through the chair, and I wanted to reiterate probably the feeling of all regional staff and councillors that road safety is still the main priority here. And cycling safety, pedestrian safety, active transportation users, road users, are ultimately better protected with cycling and active transportation infrastructure. And I think we all agree on that. And it's our main consideration whenever we're moving ahead with trying to gain more information in terms of looking at permanent cycling infrastructure. I just wanted a couple of clarifying questions, if you wouldn't mind, to staff. I understand that the number of road users are still lower than usual pre-COVID. I guess a statistic. Could I just get that clarification again from staff to hear that there still is fewer road users on the road right now in September?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, based on the counts that we've done on the roads where there are temporary bike lanes, overall daily traffic volumes are still down about 27% when compared to pre-COVID volumes for the same times. And not only is the total volume down, but the peaks are quite different. So the morning peaks and the afternoon peaks are quite lower. The morning peak counts that we've done are about 30% lower than the morning peaks we were getting pre-COVID. The afternoon peaks are down about 20%. Those are for the roads that are where we have the temporary bike lanes. We've also noticed that in general, there's still an overall decrease in traffic volumes on all the regional roads that are about 20% or so, 15 to 20% lower than they were pre-COVID.
Thank you. And if I could, Madam Chair, through you, I just really wanted to complete my comments to thank staff and to all those that have engaged in this subject. And I know certainly in Cambridge, some of the numbers and some of the experience was skewed simply because part of the region road at either end of Coronation was under construction or closed for construction, so that was an issue. And I think overall, what I'm hearing in certainly the Preston area is that many people are still very concerned about speeding in their community on some of the parallel streets to our main regional road. And I think that certainly cycling infrastructure and the ability to put active transportation routes in these areas are certainly part of the street calming and road calming, traffic calming measures that we can look at in the future. Thanks, everyone.
Chair Redmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know staff has already acknowledged that West Mount will probably be the first area where the barrels come down. I just ask that all of council be apprised of the schedule. Once it's started, I think it's good information to have.
Madam Chair, we will circulate the schedule and give notice of when we're starting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. I have no other speakers. That was a very good and fulsome discussion. We're going to take a five-minute break before we go into the remainder of our agenda. So we can reconvene at 10:30.
Are you ready?
Yes, I am. Down. It's great that there's only three of us.
Yeah, well, exactly. It's all good. I've been drinking my coffee slowly. COVID update presentation, that's going to be 20 minutes, so that's why we suggested. Because Shuwi has some slides. Yeah, so the COVID update from Shuwi is probably. No, and so I'm, but I'm not using Zoom, right? So I'm using this one, that's why I was like. But yeah. Sure, they can. Yeah, they can see you unless you want to turn on your camera.
You have to turn on your video.
Yeah, so they're seeing you via your computer. It should be in Zoom here. There you go. And then your preview button at the bottom, you need to land us. And then they will see you. Elizabeth, next to one.
We're about to reconvene, everybody? Oh, I'm muted. We're good? All right, everybody. We're about to reconvene. If you can turn yourselves back on. Just before we get started, I have just been educated, and I thought I would share my learning with everyone. Apparently, the attachments are simply a link on the bottom of our electronic packages. So if you didn't notice to click on the link, you wouldn't have got the attachments. Or if you get your agenda in paper form. But now I know. All right. Any, the information and correspondence was in our packages. Anybody want to discuss anything there? Seeing nothing, is there any other business? All right. Was that a cough, or was that a? We're on to, very timely, we're on to the item 9.1, the COVID-19 update.
But not that kind of cough.
I'm glad. Dr. Wong?
Yes. Good morning, council, and thank you for the opportunity to present a COVID-19 update. So our senior admin, Kathy Prosh, is going to, there you go, put the slides up. So if we go to the next slide. So today, I'd like to give you an update on the current status of COVID in our region. Talk about the differences between Wave 2 compared to Wave 1, which leads to why it's important to keep community transmission rates low. And then finally, what we need to do in Waterloo region now. Next slide, please. So this is our EPI curve. As we can see, our cases started to increase in September. And we and the province overall have entered our second wave of COVID-19. Our numbers fluctuate from day to day, but overall, we are on an increasing trend. We are in a very precarious time. We know Toronto, Ottawa, and Peel currently have the highest rates. Other mid-sized health unit areas like ours have also started to see increasing rates. Regarding what's called the seven-day moving average of the percent positivity of our tests, this percentage has grown from 0.5% around the end of August, beginning of September, to 1.2% approximately at this time. This means among those who are tested, more are testing positive. This is in line with other indicators that there's been an increase in COVID infections in the region and that the increases are not due to only testing more people. Next slide, please. We've heard a lot about COVID infections rising predominantly in younger age groups, such as those under 40. That is true, as can be seen in our own trends in Waterloo region, shown on the graph. In the younger age groups, we are seeing much less severe illness and hospitalizations. In Waterloo region, we currently have two persons hospitalized and no additional deaths. But there is an important thing to remember. Infections do not stay isolated to certain age groups. We are already seeing this movement into other age groups in Ontario. Initially, Ontario's second wave of COVID-19 was primarily impacting the 20 to 39-year-old age groups. But case growth is now occurring in all other age groups. Society overall has opened up much more in Wave 2. Cases will interact with others in various age groups through school, through work, through family or social gatherings. Next slide, please. Why it's important to keep community transmission low. Overall, like elsewhere in Ontario, there's been an increased trend of people socializing in close contact with a lot more other people. with a lot more other people than they did in wave one. Ontario's Associate Chief Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Barbara Yaffe, recently said, "The number of contacts per case is much higher than it was in the first wave, which increases the complexity of case, contact, and outbreak management quite a lot." This is a trend that has been observed here as well. The increased number of contacts per case and the fact that businesses, workplaces, schools, daycares, et cetera, are opened increases the scale and the complexity of case and contact management. The large majority of our cases go to work or to school or both, which triggers a corresponding increase in the number of workplace and school settings which require follow-up in an effort to prevent further spread. For example, a case in a worker leads to worksite investigations and contact tracing in the workplace. A case in a school or daycare leads to class dismissals and follow-up with students and families in the class, bus, and before and after school program cohorts. And cases having close contact with many others through social events or gatherings can lead to a web of social contacts to follow up with. So far, there have been limited numbers of outbreaks in Waterloo region, and they have been fairly well controlled. There is a great deal of work behind the scenes with all of these settings in an effort to keep a lid on it. That is, to prevent single cases from becoming outbreaks or managing outbreaks when they occur so that they can come quickly under control. An analogy that I like to use is that of a hockey goalie. You can be a good goalie and defend against a lot of shots. That is, a lot of cases coming into various settings. But if the shots come at you much quicker and at much greater frequency, it will become harder and harder to prevent a puck from getting through. Because testing and case and contact management are tools to detect and address infection after they've occurred. So increased community spread is like more shots on goal. It leads to more cases and more outbreaks in various settings. That is why it is so important to slow the spread in the community. It's like a good offense. Next slide, please. Provincial and local measures. In response to cases rising in Ontario, the province put in place measures effective October the third. Briefly, I'll give highlights of these. One, face coverings in all public indoor settings such as businesses, facilities, and workplaces. Two, advising Ontarians to allow close contact, that means contact without distancing or masking, with people living in their own household and maintain two meters distance from everyone else. And they've also said that Ontario's, that Ontarians who live alone may consider having close contact with another household, recognizing that it's, it's hard to be socially isolated when you're, when you're by yourself. And three, targeted measures affecting restaurants, bars, gyms, and banquet halls in Toronto, Ottawa, and Peel as of their higher than average rates of transmission. In Waterloo region, we are not subject to the additional restrictions I just mentioned that are now currently in place in Toronto, Ottawa, and Peel. However, I will be issuing a couple of additional requirements for food and drink establishments under the Reopening of Ontario Act. And they are related to two things. One, ensuring that background, music, or sound levels are not louder than normal conversation so that people do not have to lean in closer or raise their voices or shout in such settings. When we do monitoring, we find that owners' operators are working hard to comply with all the required measures. And most will cooperate with respect to the volume of music. But this requirement will level the playing field and make it a requirement for all. Second requirement, requiring that operators collect information for each patron. This is currently the requirement in places like Toronto, Ottawa, and Peel. And will speed up contact management should we require it. These requirements will be issued shortly in the coming days. Next slide, please. In addition, this morning, I issued a Section 22 class order for case and contact management. In the context of an increasing number of cases, we have started to encounter some instances where people are refusing to comply with public health directions, such as the direction to self-isolate. I have had to issue individual Section 22 orders. This class order, similar to the ones that have been issued in Toronto, Ottawa, Peel, and other areas, will enable public health to act swiftly if needed. The order is not intended for the vast majority of people who are cooperating with us and trying their best to comply. Public health to support cases. It is meant to make clear the expectation that compliance with important measures such as self-isolation when you are infectious is a requirement and is only intended for the very few people who will still refuse to comply. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, what are we trying to achieve? We are trying to slow the spread of COVID in order to prevent a rapid escalation of cases. Once you're in a wave and you start to have increasing cases, you can rapidly escalate in terms of the number of cases. And this is in order to keep schools and businesses open, to keep medical procedures and surgeries going, to prevent lockdowns in long-term care homes and other vulnerable settings as much as we can. The more quickly it escalates, the less we have the option to use targeted measures. And the more likely significant closures and shutdowns will become necessary. So what we need to do now is limit the number of people with whom we have unprotected close contact. Limited to our immediate household or one or two additional essential caregivers. Or if we're alone, we may want to be in a bubble with another smaller household. Small is safer. Number two, physically distance and wear face covering with everyone else. This includes at family gatherings or while visiting friends. And number three, stay at home and away from others when we are ill and make an appointment to be tested. We cannot be complacent. Our numbers are growing. As we have already seen happen elsewhere in Ontario, they can quickly spiral into widespread transmission. But we can act now to slow the spread. How big, how tall the second wave becomes in Waterloo region is up to all of us. Let's work together to protect each other. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wong, that was excellent. I do have a question from Counselor Strickland.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Wong, really appreciate that update. A couple of questions related to the increase in the number of cases that we're seeing. What's the, can you remind me, and I think you mentioned it, what's the rate of positivity now compared to what it was earlier in the pandemic?
Yeah, so at the end of August, beginning of September, before we started to see the escalation, we are at pretty low rates of positivity. So approximately 0.5% of all people that were being tested were coming back positive. And we've seen since then, even though we've still had a lot of people go for testing, that the percentage of the people that are testing positive has, has climbed up gradually to about 1.2% today.
Okay, so the number of positive cases increased because you touched on it. A lot of people are in the community, just through conversations are saying, well, we're testing more. We're bound to find more Corona variety, coronavirus cases because we're testing more. But the actual percentage of those that are testing positive is greater than what it was. So it's not related to the amount of tests. Then how about the number, the percentage of hospitalizations, the percentage of deaths?
Yeah, that's been really low to date. So that's not unexpected because most of the cases or the case growth has mostly occurred in the younger generation. So for now, we have low rates of hospitalization. We haven't had any additional deaths in wave.
So we want, we want, we wanted, sorry, sorry, I thought you were finished, sorry.
Sorry, I, I just meant to add, but we're seeing this shift in Ontario, we're starting to spread to other groups. And so this is generally what happens next.
Okay, so that's why we need to reinforce the message about continuing to wear the mask, distancing, be smart about Thanksgiving and gatherings outside of your immediate family bubble. So we don't have to go into a potential lockdown area weeks down the road. So I think that's an important message to, to share with people. And, and just on that, you mentioned in your, in your slide deck there about most of the cases that you're seeing are from workplaces or from schools. And I wanted to just talk about schools a little bit. You're seeing in many boards, like Toronto hired five thousand more teachers. Ottawa, various boards throughout the province are hiring more teachers. The unemployment rate for teachers is, you know, like less than 1% now. The teachers' federations have sent out letters to retirees, people who lost their certification, to come back into schools and help out because teachers are testing positive or kids testing positive where they're going to get a test. And I understand even if they go to get a test, even if they, you know, test positive or negative, they still have to self-isolate for fourteen days. So in, in terms of, of keeping the economy open, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's more that we can do for our local schools. Because if schools shut down, and, and there's our schools across the province shutting down on a regular basis now. But if, if schools shut down because they can't get enough teachers to come in and fill the vacancies, the, the kids are going to be unsupervised. Well, then the economy is going to go shortly thereafter. And in terms of we're going to have to shut the economy down because we need the schools open so people can go to work. In Lampton, they've set up an edge, a specialized testing center for educators and schoolchildren. In Ottawa, I know that they have mobile testing units that they're taking to various schools, kind of like an random selected basis. I know University of Waterloo opened up a testing center, good for them, for their, for their staff and educators and students. But I'm wondering if there's something more that we can do for our school boards in our community to help take some of that pressure off. Because if they can't get teachers to come in and fill in the vacancies created by COVID testing, we're going to have a much bigger problem than kids just being in school, not having a teacher. We're going to have parents who are going to have to come home from work and not stay at work. And it's going to have a ripple effect throughout the economy. So I'm just wondering if you could comment on that? And, and maybe possibly there's some dialogue that we can have the local school boards to see if there's something we can work collaboratively on to help with this, you know, testing backlog and employment issue that they're experiencing with a shortage of teachers.
Thank you, Counselor Strickland, those are, those are great points. And there's been a couple of things that have happened in the last week that should make it easier for students and teachers to be able to be tested in a timely way. So one is the province put in place guidance on who can be tested now at the assessment centers and pharmacies. And it reflects those who need to be tested, like those students and teachers that have been told they need to get a test. And not everyone that would like to have a test. So that is freeing up capacity at, at those centers. The second thing, and, and so therefore, teachers and students are one of the priority groups to be tested. The second thing is the province has updated their guidance in terms of the symptoms that would prompt a student or a teacher to have to not come to work and, well, actually, it's for students, I should say, has updated their guidance for students in terms of when they, you know, have to stay away from school, when they have to get a test or consult with their primary care practitioner. So that is less conservative than it was before, which was very, very conservative. And so that also should allow more children to be able to attend school as long as they don't have certain more serious illnesses, or sorry, more serious symptoms. So, you know, those two things should improve the situation because you're right, there has been a, a lot of disruption in terms of, you know, children and, and teachers not being able to come to class. And there have been these testing delays and difficulties in getting tested. So the overall testing strategy for Ontario and for the various regions in Ontario is determined by Ontario Health. And, you know, the testing center leadership itself provide input to, to Ontario Health. And so, you know, the, the school situation is definitely something that we're monitoring and, and going to, to provide input to Ontario Health about in order to make sure that, you know, there, there aren't any necessary more, more unnecessary delays than there, than there needs to be for that. Even if you would set up a, a separate testing for teachers and, and, and students, the way it works in terms of the test processing, they wouldn't get their results assessed or, or, or analyzed and then come back any sooner. It would all go into the same lab system network in terms of processing. Even if you set up, you know, special testing for the teachers, they, like the other groups that are at high risk, like long-term care homes or other places where there's outbreaks, all, all the tests would go into the same system to be assessed. So it, it wouldn't lead to them getting the tests earlier, for example. But it's, it's a point, you know, we're going to continue to monitor and try to ensure that testing accessibility and turnaround times improve.
Okay, yeah, thank you, through, through Madam Chair, just in terms of follow-up. So, so I understand that the guidelines come from the province and we have an intersection here of public health and Ministry of Education. So I guess I'm just wondering why other communities are developing different solutions to this education conundrum in terms of, I cited the example of Lampton County, Ottawa, are two examples that, that I, that I'm aware of. So I, I'm just wondering why those regions are looking at a different way to help support the school systems? And, and why, in your view, you don't think that it would? you don't think that it would make a difference here in Waterloo region?
I think, you know, I, as I mentioned, testing is overseen by Ontario Health and, and locally it is overseen by the, by the hospitals. And there is, you know, leadership for that. For example, Lee Fairclough, the President of St. Mary's, sort of, is the, is the lead for the three hospitals on that. And because they, because they're testing, you know, they would have the best idea in terms of what's the best way to make people from all the priority groups that are prioritized for testing get testing, you know, in the, in the most accessible and timely way possible. And so, you know, it, it, it would, it depends on what the testing, what, what testing is like in each of the areas. There could be particularities. I, I don't know specifics about the Lampton situation. But I would defer to them in terms of what's the best way to ensure quick flow so that the results from those priority groups can be, you know, assessed quickly by the laboratory system, which is also, you know, a separate system. So, yeah, I, I would say that, you know, so I, I would defer to them in terms of the best setup.
All right. So, so thanks, thanks for that. I, I, I recognize that there's a lot going on and you and your team are, are working flat out to, to deal with this. And I just want to, you know, just redouble in expressing my concern around supports for the education system. I'm hoping that the Directors of Education are engaged with our pandemic control group. And if there's anything that we can do to support the schools to stay open, it is critically important for us to avoid another massive shutdown. And so whatever needs to happen, whatever dialogues need to happen with whatever ministries or ministers, I, I'd just like to emphasize that support for our school system is absolutely critical, not only for the health of teachers and, and students, but also for the health of our overall economy. So if there's anything that needs to be done, I'm sure that you would bring it forward to us and we would do what it takes to make sure we provide those kinds of support. So thank you very much, Dr. Wong.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Galloway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, Dr. Wong and, and all the staff, of course, for the, the job that, that all of you are doing. And I just wanted to say that notwithstanding, of course, that you have independence of action, as a medical officer, health on these orders, I do support those actions because I think, as you have identified, there are key areas of, of enforcement in one particular case and in, in mitigating kind of social distancing kind of implications and others that are really important. So I, I applaud you for the, the actions that you're taking. The question I have is in regards to the new provincial mandate on masking and how it compares or integrates or supersedes, I'm not sure what the right word is, with the mask bylaw that we and many other municipalities have had for some time. We did ask the province a number of months ago to do this. Municipalities went through the, the bloodletting process, so to speak, to put bylaws into place. And now the, the province is doing what we had asked them to do a long time ago, to have a uniform across the board mandate for masks in the province so that people traveling from one community to another know what the rules are as opposed to, while here it's interpreted one way and in another community it's interpreted differently. So what, what do our, 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 our business owners need to know? If we, if we know already, I mean, maybe the details aren't even out. What do they need to know? What do the citizens need to know in terms of the, the new mask mandate?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Galloway. I'm actually going to pass it over to Deb Arnold, I think she's had a brief opportunity to look at the regulations that just came out yesterday.
Okay.
Through you, Chair Clerk. Thank you, Dr. Wong. So yes, as Dr. Wong mentioned, the actual wording of the reg was released late yesterday. Staff has had a chance to do an initial review and then we are meeting this afternoon in order to do a more detailed review and then, of course, update the region's website and get information out to the public. In general, I can say that the regulation is consistent generally with the regional bylaws. So, you know, in terms of people complying with the bylaw, in my view, they should continue to do so. Where regional bylaw places the obligation on an individual to wear a face covering in certain indoor places, the provincial regulation places the obligation on the person responsible for a business or organization to ensure that persons in their, on their premises indoor, wear face coverings. So that's a notable difference between the regional bylaw and this provincial regulation. The exemptions are generally similar. One potentially notable exemption would be that the region's bylaw exempts children under the age of five, whereas the provincial regulation is a little more restrictive. It only exempts children under the age of two. So strictly speaking, and I don't know the extent to which this is in fact an enforcement issue, but strictly speaking, then the regulation would prevail over the regional bylaw and children under the age of two would be required to, to wear a face covering. So in general, that, you know, it's, it's consistent. But the, the notable difference is, you know, who has the legal obligation. In the case of the regional bylaw, as I said, it's the individual. In the case of the provincial regulation, it's the person responsible for the premises.
Well, thanks, Ms. Arnold. Now, in regards to that particular matter, that, that is a fairly notable, significant difference between our bylaw and now the, the provincial mandate. And of course, we labored over that after a lot of consultation with the business community. So now that it appears that the, the store owner or the business establishment owner is responsible for enforcement, what are their options? Do, do the regulations contain what their options are? Do they, do they call our bylaw enforcement? Do they call the police? Do they, what, what would they be required to do as a minimum to, to enforce the, the provincial mandate?
So the, the regulation does not elaborate on the enforcement mechanism or the manner in which the person fulfills their responsibility. So this type of offense is known as a strict liability offense where the person has reasonable steps to ensure compliance with, with the regulations. So, you know, we will certainly look at this in more detail this afternoon in order that we can post information on our website in this regard. It really is just simply saying, business owners, people responsible for premises are not to allow persons to enter onto their premises without a face covering, subject to the exemptions, of course.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Chair Redmond.
Thank you, Chair Clerk. If I could, through you, to Deb Arnold as well. And it may fall under the, to be confirmed. Is the fine regime, has that been laid out by the province?
As it stands now, the province-wide face covering obligation is an amendment to the existing regulation under the Reopening Ontario Act. So it, it just is another obligation under that regulation. And I understand the, the current set fine, I believe, is, is $750 under that regulation. But we're certainly going to look in more detail at this, this amendment to get that information on the region's website as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Counselor Vabenev.
Thank you very much, Chair Clerk, and thank you, Dr. Wong, for the, the great job you and your team have been, been doing. I just want to touch on, on a couple of things. First of all, on the, the issue of the, the class order, which you're issuing under your, your purview as medical officer of, of health. You referenced a couple of other jurisdictions, Toronto, Ottawa and Peel. And I believe the, the Toronto one has been in place since April in, in the research that I had done. There really haven't been any issues there in terms of its issue. This is really about trying to help make sure that you can focus on the important work you and your team are doing and, and not having to, quite frankly, deal with people who don't want to believe that this is a real thing and that they got to take it seriously. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly correct. So earlier on the pandemic, I never had to issue an individual section, but more recently I have had to issue a few. And so with our increasing numbers, I felt that it was time to now issue a class order as has been done elsewhere, as you mentioned, yeah.
Okay, great, because I, I think it's important to, to focus in on that because it really is important. You know, while unfortunately we've seen some south of the border not take this, this thing very seriously and that plays on, on the news, I think it is important that folks here know this is a real thing and that we, we need to support you and your team to, to continue in the fight of COVID. I do know that we've been anxiously awaiting some news from the province on the issue of Thanksgiving and Halloween and formal recommendations. I don't believe that, that those have come yet. Do we have any further indication when we might expect them?
Not at this time, but I keep asking. And, you know, they, they have said it will come for things like Thanksgiving and Halloween and other festivities for the rest of the year. You know, in, in the interim, I, I last week provided some guidance around Thanksgiving. And, you know, if, if it's taking a while for other things like Halloween, you know, we'll also start to provide some interim guidance, you know, in, in the next few days or so, if, if it doesn't come by then. But, you know, we're, we're hoping to receive it soon. So whether we receive it or not, we'll, we'll be, you know, providing some interim guidance at least in, in the next few days.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that. Last point, and I know we've been talking about it in this group, at the pandemic control group and elsewhere, flu season's coming up. There's, you know, obviously concerns around the, the mixture of, of flu and, and the pandemic and, and the need for vaccinations is going to be stronger than ever. Wondering if you can talk a little bit about that and, and what our plans are in that regard?
Yes, thanks for the question, Mayor Vabenev. It's a great question because it's a really important topic. So we're actually bringing forward a report to the next committee meeting on that. But, you know, we are already making it known that, you know, the, the flu immunization campaign, you know, it will be starting later this month. The vaccine is going out now to doctors' offices for their vulnerable patients who, who are prioritized for testing first. And then we don't have an exact date from the province yet about the official launch date. That is the date that, you know, it will be open to everybody else. But we expect that to be, you know, in the second half of October. And at that time, you know, it would be available in doctors' offices, in pharmacies. And public health is also going to be holding some clinics for families with children under five because pharmacies can't immunize those, those children. So it's a real, you know, group effort in terms of multiple care providers providing this, this vaccine. The province has ordered more vaccine than, than usual, anticipating there'll be greater demand. So we'll be definitely promoting that quite a bit in, in the coming few weeks. Thanks for the question.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. And I guess the, the last thing, just to, to end with how I began. And as we go into Thanksgiving weekend, I think it's a great opportunity to say how thankful we are for the work that you and, and your team have done over the past seven months, all in our, in our healthcare providers in the community as well as our first responders. So sincere thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Joeit.
Thank you, Dr. Wong, as always. Very comprehensive. And I think you're trying not to scare us, which I appreciate. Can you, can you help me understand what the error rate is now? I heard at one time what it was and I, I just want to know if that's something that's improved. And are we going to be making use of this spit test soon?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't understand your first question. What the what was?
Error rate for a positive or a negative result on a, on a COVID test?
Error rate? Oh, okay. Well, when somebody has symptoms or when somebody's been in an environment where spread is, is very likely. For example, if they're in a long-term care home that's in an outbreak, they're either a resident or a staff person. And even if they don't have symptoms, for people like that, the test is excellent. It's very, very good. There are very few false positives and false negatives. Except the, the, the test is excellent. When you start to test people that have no symptoms and are not associated with any increased risk, right? They didn't come back from international travel. They weren't part of an outbreak or they weren't told by public health. They were in close contact with somebody who was a case and they should get tested. If they weren't one of those people, they, they're asymptomatic, they're in the community. They don't have any increased risk. The test is not very good at all. And so that is why the province has recently shifted its criteria for who can be tested because they want to make sure that it's the people that are at need of being tested and that should be tested that are getting access to the appointments in the assessment centers. So, you know, in, in, in terms of going, going forward, the test result should be very accurate because it's being limited now to those, those groups of people for whom we, we expect the test results to be very accurate. I, I hope that helps.
So I understand it. It does, but so I understand it is asymptomatic people or people with fewer symptoms are going to have more false results.
If, if you're asymptomatic in what's called low risk, like if you have no factors that put you at higher risk for being one of those people who don't have symptoms but still may have the infection or don't have symptoms yet, can test positive first and then develop symptoms later. So there are people who are asymptomatic, either throughout their illness or asymptomatic when they get tested but then later get symptoms. Those, there are people like that. But if you look for them among people that have no symptoms and that don't have any high-risk exposures, then you're gonna, you're gonna have, the, the test is not very good. You're gonna have more false positives, more false negatives. It's, it's not be a good test. And so this type of, I would call it indiscriminate testing of asymptomatic people is not a good use of the test. And so that's why it varies depending on, you know, whether you're symptomatic or not. And, and even if you're, even if you're not symptomatic, it, it, you should be tested if you have, if you've been told to be tested by public health or you're required to be tested because you want to visit long-term care, for example. So the, it, it's those groups that we want to target for testing.
Okay, and the spit test, have we found out how successful? Okay, and the spit test, have we found out how successful the spit test is? Because um the other one's really quite uncomfortable, I'm hearing.
Yeah, so the um the uh saliva tests, the province is working on that uh v- uh as quickly uh as I think is possible. I know they're putting a lot of effort into it. Um you know, they they are um hoping to to come out soon. Uh I I don't know, I don't have a timeline, unfortunately, uh but they know this is something that you know, we we all want to see, uh which is access to tests that are um uh that are easier for for people to to go uh go through. Um it will likely not be widely available to everyone when it when it's first released. It will likely be only available um in relatively smaller quantities and the province may want to target that testing uh to certain groups, for example, children, for whom it might be easier to use that type of test first.
Okay, and then the last question is, um are we seeing mutations? Are we getting a better understanding of antibodies that are being built up? Um has there been any uh value in the her- herd immunity building because we have gone out to the community or not at all?
Yeah, um I'll start with the last one. Uh in Canada and Ontario, we have very little herd immunity. Um you know, uh even in areas like Toronto, the herd immunity is not high at all. It's very low percentage, single digits, like I can't remember the latest uh because it, you know, does get updated from time to time, but i- i- it's, we can't rely on herd immunity as a means to um to 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 get us through the pandemic because there will be far more destruction uh that will happen uh in the meantime before uh enough of the of the population um has antibodies to 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 COVID. Um the other question you asked, I'm trying to remember now, um was, uh sorry, uh your first question was?
So mutation, and then, of course, her- and then, of course, antibodies.
Antibodies, yeah. Okay, so yeah, so herd immunity, antibodies, it's 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 similar because um you know, uh it's because there are, there's a very small proportion, one, two percent maybe, in the higher risk areas of people that show antibodies. So in order to have herd immunity, you would have to have, you know, a majority, uh perhaps even a large majority of people uh have antibodies. So you know, you're at like one to two percent. That that's we're very far away from that majority uh of people having antibodies. So the herd immunity would only kick in when you have a majority of people uh having antibodies. So that's why the 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 two are related and um we we can't really use that as a mechanism uh to get through COVID. Um the uh the the mutations, we haven't seen anything that suggests that um you know, there's been any significant changes uh to that. Um but you know, what we've noticed is that um a a lot of the uh younger age groups are 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 getting infected now. Um that's um that's the main difference, I would say.
Okay, thank you for that. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Dr. Wong, I did have one question about your order. Um how do you expect that will be monitored, implemented, uh enforced?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. So it's it's really when we follow up with cases and contacts. Uh as I mentioned, the vast majority of the time, people want to do the right thing and they want to cooperate and uh they're trying their best. Uh so you know, there there is, that wouldn't even come into play. Um um but um you know, we've had some rare instances uh recently. Uh and so um now that we have this order in place, uh i- i- it's an opportunity for us to uh to again, make the expectation clear to to people that we are directly following up with, uh their cases or or contacts, that you know, they they'll 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 be divided public health direction and you know, there are some things that they're gonna have to comply with. And so it helps us, you know, through the order, make it clear to them, these are the expectations. And oftentimes mind, um that makes people comply. If if they originally, they were you know, sort of not really wanting to comply, once they understand the expectations, then um they 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 comply. In rare instances, um you know, um very rare instances, uh this has been um yeah, very rare, uh we have had to uh go to enforcement of the orders. In in and and in that case, you know, there's a legal process um that starts in which um um you know, the the lawyers could probably provide a bit more information about that. But but overall, it 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 would be going through a legal mechanism uh to um enforce compliance, for example, with the need to self-isolate.
So generally, it would be in the course of your contract tracing that you would, contact tracing that you would hear or learn that somebody was not somebody was released from hospital with instructions to self-isolate for ten days and waded into a group of people without wearing a mask, that sort of thing.
Exactly. And it would only be after, you know, they understood, um you know, they had a chance to to comply. I- i- it's not when, you know, just giving them an order right away. It's only when we feel that the we have no other option.
Okay, thanks. I see no other questions on this. Um I thank you for your hockey analogy. That was helpful. And I'm gonna use one, too. I think that our public health unit is the Tampa Bay Lightning of public health units on this and fortunately not the Toronto Maple Leafs. So, thank you.
Ooh.
Uh as I'm gonna call for any other business. All right, seeing none, our next meeting is uh October twenty seventh. And I need a motion to go into closed session. Move by Counselor Jaworski, seconded by Counselor Jawett. I believe that is unanimous and carried.